We would like to welcome everyone tonight to our city council meeting on Tuesday, August 8th, 7:00 PM. And we would like to welcome all of you here tonight. And just, we would like to just do a test and make sure that we can hear Councilwoman Price-Hewish, who is joining us remotely.
Hi, Mayor, I'm here.
Excellent, thank you. And we would also like to excuse Councilman Bell, who is not with us tonight, with his family. So we will begin with a pledge of allegiance, and we're grateful to have one of our younger residents, Olivia Outson, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand and join her in saying, in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Olivia. And we are grateful to have Kathy Waldrop here from the Bountiful East State, and she will offer a prayer for our meeting tonight.
Olivia, that was awesome. You don't have to follow after me. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together as citizens of Bountiful. We're thankful for our state and for our city and for the unity that we feel within the city. We're thankful for this building we have to meet in. We're thankful for all those who are in attendance, and we're thankful for their opinions that will be brought forth today. We're thankful that they feel the freedom to voice their opinions and that they are heard. We're thankful for all those who serve on this council and for their sacrifices in doing so. We're thankful for their integrity to uphold the values of such a diverse community that we also hope is unified. And we pray that as they make decisions tonight, that they will do so with open minds, that they will listen to the opinions presented and consider all points of view in making their decisions. We're thankful again for this city, and we're thankful for all those who serve the city to keep it clean, organized, and functioning, and safe. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you so much, Kathy. We would like to now open this meeting for public comment time. If you'd like to speak, we'd love to hear from you. Anyone can speak, just state your name and address, and you have two minutes if you'd like to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period and move to consider approval of minutes from previous meetings held July 25th.
Still moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed that motion carries? Thank you. We will now have council reports, and I will start. I just have a little report to share, and that is, last night, as part of the South Davis Fire Metro Fire Board, we did vote to increase property taxes by 18%. And it's, it's not a fun thing to do, but certainly necessary. And I had three residents contact me about that, and they were all in support. And it was clear to me that the district is need, it's needful to be able to retain the firefighters there and to be able to keep pace with other fire entities and not to lose staff. And so it was a tough vote, but an important vote, and I think that it was important in supporting the men and women at the South Davis Metro Fire District. So that's a report I wanted to share. Councilwoman Price-Hewish, do you have a report tonight?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a report related to the South Davis Recreation District. Part of the efforts of the district have been negotiations with the school district on two different kind of contribution issues. One would be what we've been calling the Farmington Factor, which is that the students of Farmington High on the swim team utilize the REC district for their practice and meets. But the parents of those students live outside of our taxing district, and so don't contribute to the operations and the funds of the Recreation District. As the, as you've heard in previous reports, there have been some financial struggles at the Recreation District. So our ask has been for the school district to recognize that hosting four teams and one of the teams not being part of our, our taxing area, you know, has a burden and a cost, and we'd like them to, to recognize that and help fund some ongoing operations and maintenance as part of that. So we have a subcommittee of the REC district board that met with two school board members and, and district staff to continue those discussions. They're not finalized, but they were, they were productive, and the school board members were responsive to that need and that issue. The other is an ongoing discussion about if at some point in the future the REC district moves forward with bonding for an expansion facility, how much the school district might contribute to helping build a second satellite facility and remodeling the existing site that's here in Bountiful. This is a discussion the school district is having throughout Davis County because there are challenges at other area pools, the Leighton Surf and Swim Pool that is a municipal pool operated by Leighton City, and there's another pool in Clearfield, I believe. And each of the pools have age and maintenance struggles and issues. And so as the district looks to make sure they have adequate resources for those high school swim teams, they are considering different ways in which they can invest, either in a partnership with either cities or Recreation Districts, or potentially building their own school district only pool facilities. So it was part of those larger discussions about how they may play into a bond discussion here in the south end of the county if the Recreation District moves that forward at some point.
Thank you for that update. Councilwoman Higgins, Councilman Higginson.
You never know, Mayor. You never know. I don't have an update on the assigned committees that I serve on, as they are all meeting after this meeting this month. What I do have is an update that I thought would be beneficial to share with the folks who are tuned into this meeting and were not in our last, if I might. Just letting folks know that the bonds have been issued for our fiber network. The bonds were issued at a very favorable percentage rate, thanks to the councils that have served this city for a long period of time and their financial policy, and the great city managers and city staff who have carefully managed city funds over the years. That interest rate and its advantageous rate will save us millions of dollars over the repayment of that bond. We also found out that construction has begun, and just really excited to see this network installed and give residents another available network to get their internet service from. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Excellent. Councilwoman Segura Bar.
Nothing this evening, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. And now, do we have someone here? Oh, yes, we do. Council, Bountiful City Youth Council representative, and Athena, is that your name? Excellent. Thank you for being here tonight to report on the youth council.
Of course. Hello again. My name is Athena Tonga Ravi, and I am the Bountiful City Youth Council, City Manager. So here's some, here's our report for our activities from July. We had our first meeting with our new council, and we, each of the members were able to design their T-shirts. So here is our report for upcoming activities. One activity will be, we will be touring City Hall next week and learning more about how our city operates. Another activity is we will be helping to clean up both the Bountiful Museum and the Kimball Mill, Kimball Mill later this month. And then our last activity is we will be touring the Woods Cross Teen Center and seeing how we can help. Do you have any questions?
That is great. Thank you so much for your service that you do, and it's nice that you're, are you the new city manager, so for this coming school year?
Yes, I am.
How exciting. Well, congratulations, and thank you for your work. And when, just for anyone who might be interested, do you know when applications are accepted if, for anyone that wants to be a part of the youth council?
I'm guessing applications for next year, are you asking, are around May?
Thank you, yeah. Spring is when people could watch for ways to get involved with the youth council. That's great. Thank you so much for your update.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, now we will consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000 paid June, July 12th, 19th, and 26th, 2023.
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve those expenditures as listed.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes, thank you. And we'll now consider approval of a contract with Rocky Mountain Monument to purchase and install the, the unit urn niche wall. Mr. Hill, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I stand before you tonight to bring to you a proposal to build a 144-unit urn niche wall. This is part of the Healing Garden located in the north end of the cemetery that was started back in 2020. Do you have the graphic? So this is just a master plan concept of drawing of the Healing Garden, and the urn niche wall would be on the far, very far left side. It's kind of that brown, bold line you see right there. It's hundred, or it's 24 units long, six units high, so it's a one-sided wall. Previously, you approved back in, later in 2020, 48-unit columbarium, but it's the same kind of thing. And it's the brown line kind of at an angle in the top left-hand corner there. That's in, and about, last time I talked to our cemetery superintendent, it's about a third full. So 48 units selling very quickly. We've been tracking urn burials in the cemetery for several years now, and we've seen a large incline in those purchases. Just in the last three years, we've seen about a five to six percent increase, and that's a percentage based on how many traditional burials we're doing in the cemetery. So we're averaging about 15% of the burials in the cemetery are urns, and it's just increasing over time. We're seeing very much, a lot of interest in urn burials because it's a more affordable option for folks in Bountiful and the surrounding areas. It really hasn't been an option in the past. So I think us leading the way, Bountiful Cemetery leading the way in urn burials has been a great option for our citizens. Over time, seeing the increase of urn burials over time, it's become necessary to, to build this new wall. We're seeing lead times of about eight to 10 months for granite, and also that's where we're seeing the construction world schedules are out that far. It's kind of a unique product, so it's, it's kind of a sole source product. There aren't a lot of companies around the country that actually provide urn niches. Fortunately, we do have a company in Salt Lake City, and that is Rocky Mountain Monument that we've spoke to. We did receive a favorable, favorable bid from them for $88,595, and that includes installation. As soon as we give them approval, or based on your approval, they'll order the product and get that, that clock ticking. While we're waiting, they've proposed that they'll, they'll come and do all the footings, and they'll do all of the rough groundwork, they'll do all of the, the block wall behind the actual placement of, of the urn unit, the urns. So there's a lot of work to be done, and that all, that work can all be done while we're waiting. Staff does recommend that the council authorize us to enter into a purchase and installation contract with Rocky Mountain Monument in the amount of $88,595 for this 144-unit urn niche wall. It is a little bit more than what we budgeted for. We have $80,000 budgeted in our capital projects budget for the cemetery. I've talked to staff, trying to figure out how we can make up the difference, and we will adjust our spending accordingly. I will answer any questions you may have. May I?
Mayor?
Just a minute, Councilwoman Price-Hewish, just a minute. Okay, yeah, go right ahead.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say I think this is going to be a great addition, and I'm happy to see that the first phase of the Healing Gardens will be completed. The question I have for Brock is, what is our timeline for completion of the entire Healing Gardens as represented in the rendering?
So we've been, we've been under construction now, well, the first phase of this was completed in 2020, and so we're starting to see that fill up. We have approximately 200 urn spaces between the several different options that they have, not just the urn niche wall, but several other options that are available. So really, it will be based on time, but we anticipate maybe six to eight years before this is built out.
Oh, well, thank you for that clarification. I think what I was wondering is for the Healing Garden as represented on, like, the entire Healing Garden that is, that we have the rendering of with the pergola and the canopies and all of those different aspects of the Healing Garden, what is the timeline on completing the entire, not just the columbarium, but addition, but the whole Healing Garden?
Yeah, again, I think it's based on use and the increase of purchases in that area in the Healing Garden. We do anticipate about a six to eight-year build out for the entire Healing Garden area.
So Brock, you're just doing it section by section. So as, as one area of urns fills up, then you, you move further down the, from left to right on completing phases?
That's correct. So probably four phases in, in the Healing Garden by the time we're built out. But we anticipate, again, because of the pace we're seeing, now, that could change based on how many cells we're seeing over time, but based on the increase of purchases being made in the, in the Healing Garden, we anticipate that that's about the timeframe we're looking at.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Councilman Higginson?
Yes, please. Brock, what's the current cost for folks who want to use the urn space?
So it, that's a good question. It varies based on the level by which you purchase, so the lower levels are going to be your cheapest. I think they start at $650. That would include the opening and closing, which is typically an addition to a traditional burial. And then the upper ones are $850, $950.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the contract with Rocky Mountain Monuments for the installation of the 144 urn units. Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Segura Bar. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now we will consider approval of the purchase of a truck for the landfill. Mr. Charles Benson.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Came before you tonight to ask for a service truck for our landfill. Our landfill's operations have grown, and our, we've gone to larger equipment, more efficient equipment to do this. So with larger equipment, we've outgrown our current service trucks for that. So we need to get a, a larger service truck and a crane to do this, the service on the equipment safely. We received a bid on the chassis and the body. It's a highly unique apparatus out there, so we found only one source for both of the, the chassis and the equipment, the crane equipment and bed for that, that truck. The truck chassis, we found from Rush Truck Center in 2024 International Truck for $188,391. And the truck body with the crane package from Owen Equipment for $273,951, $991, $591. And tools and outfitting for $30,000 for a grand total of $491,982. This is part of our 10-year plan that we've been working towards getting this equipment, and we put aside $498,000 to purchase this equipment. Staff recommends that the landfill purchase, the council approve the purchase of this truck as stipulated above for $491,982. And entertain any questions you might have?
Mayor, if I may. Charles, would you mind explaining, just because this is such a big ticket item for people or for our residents to understand the scope and the, the need and exactly what this truck will be doing on a day-to-day basis and, and how long we expect to have it in our use?
We expect this truck to last between 15 to 20 years for the landfill. It will be doing servicing equipment, so I'm not sure if you've been out to the landfill, you've seen our compactors, they weigh over 100,000 pounds. The wheels on them are extremely heavy. From time to time, we have to do bearings and other hydraulic motor equipments. We have to take some parts off of the machine, machine that are sexually heavy, and we've been doing them kind of precariously sometimes, using a loader, or a loader or a excavator to do that. We want to do it much safer and for all the employees out there as well, and get as much life as we can out of that equipment by doing the proper service when we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
There's no more discussion. I'm happy to make a motion. A motion that we approve the purchase of the truck for the landfill, which includes the chassis, body package, and the tools and outfitting in the amount of $491,982.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Bradshaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. And then we'll ask you to also take the next item, consider approval of the purchase of a Peterbilt chassis, et cetera.
So this is our, I'm for the sanitation department. We need to replace our 2018 side-loading refuge truck. Those trucks are, live in hard times. They pick between 650 and 800 cans up every day, so they do a lot of wear and tear on those trucks. We will keep this truck as a backup in case one of our other trucks break down or our normal service when we have to bring them in for maintenance and have that truck available so they can keep going on that. Staff requested the bids on the chassis and the bodies. We received only two replies with available capacity to build them in this timeframe, which is Peterbilt chassis for $201,984, which is the chassis we've been using all along on, on all of our trucks, and found it to be a very useful and workable chassis. Signature Labri is the, is the loading body, the side-loading body and the 31-yard capacity of holding the garbage. That's the one we've been using for the last seven years as well, and has worked out very well for us. And that total is $148,998. This report's been reviewed by myself and this public works director and the city manager. This equipment is part of our 10-year plan. We'd like to replace our trucks within six to seven years and then hold them in reserve for another additional couple of years as a backup truck. We have allocated $365,000 in our sanitation budget to replace this truck. Staff recommends that council approve the purchase of this Peterbilt chassis from Jackson Group for $201,984, and Labri chassis loading body from Signature Equipment for $148,998 for a total of $350,982. Any other questions?
Questions, council?
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the purchase and thank Mr. Benson for staying under budget.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And the last item of yours, Charles?
The last item I came for you is to replace one of our 10-wheel dump trucks that we also use as snowplows. We were fortunate to find state bids on this equipment, the chassis from Rush Truck Center for $141,738-16, and then the state bid is quoted there. And then the outfitting of the dump bed, salter, and hydraulics and plow from Viking Clives Midwest for $138,700, and the state bid quoted there. This is part of our 10-year plan, that we keep these trucks, replace them, rotate them down, we take them off the high part of the hill, bring them down to the lower part of the city, and then we'll get them out. We usually get around 15 to 18 years out of these trucks is what we, we shoot to get on those. So staff recommends that we approve the purchase of the 10-wheel dump truck from, chassis from Rush Truck Center for $141,738-16, and the plow body hydraulics package from Viking Clives Midwest for $138,700 for a total of $280,438-16.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. I'd make a motion that we approve the purchase of the 10-wheel dump truck with the package of equipment that it needs, and also that we give this one a name.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can't wait to see Darth Vader in the fleet.
Excellent. Okay, we will now turn the time over to Mr. Francisco Astorga to consider approval of ordinance 2023-05.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is a land use code tax amendment affecting the downtown zone, residential parking and carports. We do ask you that you hold a public hearing and then you review the, this legislative item. Part A, well, actually, this is, this application was initiated by Mr. John Egan and Ken Knighton. They're both here tonight. The first part of this is reducing downtown multifamily parking, and the second part is allowing carports in the rear, rear slash sideyard setbacks. The Planning Commission had bifurcated motions for both of these items as the Planning Commission reviewed this item during that July 18th, 2023 meeting, where the recommendation, which is shown in the staff report, which was also staff recommendation, went through with a 4-3 vote. I'll get into that in a, in a few minutes here. And then the second recommendation or vote was regarding the language that the Planning Commission provided for the carports, and that was a 7-2-0 vote. I was prepared, or I was, I started, I should say, preparing a PowerPoint presentation, and then I gave up on it in that it was the exact same exhibits that I put throughout the staff report. So I'm going to be, so I gave up on that. So we're just going to follow the packet, and this item starts on page 23, and it goes through 41. I'm going to do a good job, I'm going to, I'm going to do my best in giving you those, those reference numbers. So on the very top of page 24, this is a simple chart, or the simply indicating what the applicant submitted and what the current code indicates. or simply indicating what the applicant submitted and what the current code indicates. And I'll give Miranda a chance to pull that up. The, we're on top of page twenty-four. There we go. So you can see here, the applicant requested an overall reduction in the way that we do parking. It's right there, top of page twenty-four. No recommendation or request was provided for a studio apartment. We've had a work session, discussion with council about a month ago where it was decided to take a look at parking only in downtown area and to definitely include a studio type of ratio in that the zoning code doesn't mention one. It's a simple interpretation by staff, studio, one-bedroom, same thing. It was a simple, very simple interpretation. We're departing from that as we heard from council, and it was supported by the planning commission to have its own category. Well, we're going to skip the next part. And the importance, we're going to take a look at the importance of parking in the downtown zone. For the people at home or even in the audience, the downtown zone is Main Street Platte, approximately a hundred west to a hundred east from Fourth North to Fifth South, approximately. When we take a look at parking cities, we're supposed to look at, we're supposed to analyze local trends and data. We do take a look at the only guidance that we have regarding, if you will, a national parking trend and data, which is published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the ITE. And we also look at surrounding cities. Those are the big three of how we take a look at parking. This is indeed a legislative item. We may choose to zone as you see fit, as, again, this is a legislative item. In probably two thousand and four, two thousand and five, I'm looking at Councilmember Higginson. The city started the visioning process through that envision Utah analysis that was done and set up and various meetings and surveys where it was decided that the downtown zone or this area was supposed to be more of a walkable, more of a dense, multi, I'm sorry, not multi, but mixed-use type of zoning. I'm getting a head nod from that. And those goals and policies did make it into the two thousand and nine comprehensive general plan, the current general plan that we have. In moving forward, just to give you a quick one-on-one, we're on the bottom of page twenty-five. This is simply a quick and dirty exercise of how we take a look at parking. Parking is a simple function of the number of bedrooms in each apartment unit times a rate. We add those numbers together and we always have to round up. That's what the code says. So the first example is a simple sixteen-unit hypothetical current code. Based on that mix of bedrooms, it triggers, it requires thirty-three parking spaces. And then we have another example for two bedrooms, two-bedroom units and fourteen units there gives us thirty-two, and then a simple three-two-bedroom units gives us seven. We can come back and expend more time if you need more help with that. The challenge that we have in the downtown is that it's completely different than my multifamily residential zones in that the density of my RMs, if you will, the multifamily, which we have four. Is my mic not on?
It is now.
It was. I'm sorry. I hit the button. Maybe it was Galen playing a prank on me. So the difference between the uniqueness of this code of the downtown zone is that the multifamily residential zones already have a built-in cap in its simplest form. X number of units per acre with a function of simple setbacks and height, that's the magic number. The downtown area, when the city adopted, or lastly refined it, I shall say, I want to say October, November of two thousand and eighteen, I think the city chose or removed that density, that cap. So in essence, and what I tell people is that the current currency or density is simple now adding height, setbacks, and then parking. That determines how much a developer can build on site. That's why parking is so precious and important in the downtown zone. Since we're talking mixed use, I do want to give a quick plug for, the mixed-use zone is completely different as when we rezone a property into the mixed-use zone. Renaissance Town Center, it requires a development plan where parking heights setbacks are then legislated at that time. So that's another animal, a different, completely different way of looking at parking and even development standards. Moving on, I'm about, I'm just going over the staff report. I thought we did a good job of the way that each section transitioned into the next one. We want to add that my department in two thousand and nineteen, we conducted a study and we counted a hundred and fifty-six parking spaces along Main Street. These are on-street parking spaces. These are not on-site or off-street. So in this district and all of the other districts throughout the city or zones, we cannot count any on-street parking for purposes of counting parking. We understand that the parking spaces are available and that anyone can use them, but for the purposes of these ratios, we cannot count them. That is not something that is unique to Bountiful City. That's how most or all cities interpret or enforce or legislate how parking is regulated. I do want to go to the perfect bottom of page twenty-six as where we just want to remind you of our parking limitations. This is not land use code, but this is the city code, I believe it's the traffic code where this comes from, Section thirteen-one, one oh three, where no one in the city is supposed to park between two AM and six AM from November through March. That's just, if you do, you could get a ticket. The next one is you're not supposed to park while, when, on the street while it's actually snowing or twelve hours after. But wait, there's an exception to Main Street between Fifth South and Fourth North. That's item two. So that one does not apply. And then the third regulation is that you cannot park for a period longer than twenty, twenty-four consecutive hours. This is important as this is all related to the specific downtown area that we're looking at specifically in that the city does provide those public parking spaces, the one hundred and fifty-six parking spaces. We're going to move on to the very top of page twenty-seven. And we had quite the discussion. We had two discussions with the planning commission. We had one, I want to say, in, in June, maybe it was, yeah, early June. And then in July, we had this, this discussion. And if you can, we have the exact same information on the very top in the gray and the green. And then in the blue, we added staff recommendation, which is what currently the planning commission moved forward with officially on that four to three vote. The planning commission spent the majority of the time, I want to say, of the parking discussion, probably ninety percent of the time, talking about that one-bedroom unit. That's the one that there was debate back and forth, or deliberation, I should say. The planning commission had no issues whatsoever in reducing the three-bedroom unit down to two. The planning commission did not have many thoughts or discussions on the two-bedroom unit being reduced to one point seven-five. And it did not have much, there was not much discussion at all regarding that studio apartment having a one-parking unit. However, that one-bedroom unit, it was probably ninety minutes, maybe even more, of going back and forth in, in, in that deliberation, in that analysis. Finally, somebody made a motion and it moved based on the rules that we operate as Commissioner Jacob Spott, Gilmore and Clark voted for it and Commissioner Monson Ward and Price Hewish voted against it. As part of the motion, the commission recommended that we daylight and that we indicate that on the dissenting vote, Monson, Ward and Price Hewish, they would have been okay. They would have been just fine if that one-bedroom unit, if that specific rate was one point two-five. That was not part of an official motion, but they did want us to make that part of the record and to communicate that with you and that they were fine with that. Moving forward on the bottom of page twenty-seven, this is what I call Example One-B, Two-B and Three-B. They're the exact same scenarios that we already provided back on page twenty-five based on the actual reduction, based what would happen if council moved forward with the commission's recommendation. So we have the exact same exercise that we have in this section. I don't want to spend too much time on this. During that first planning commission meeting, which it was continued to provide staff a little bit more time to take a look at different ways of looking at parking, which then council provided in a work session direction that you were more inclined to look at a reduction, not removing any parking ratio. We capitalized in getting opinions from the police department, the streets department. Furthermore, we reached out to the downtown zone business owners. We sent them a letter via mail and also we sent them an email based on all of our registered business licenses where we provided an opportunity for them to come in and talk to us. That was not the only opportunity regarding business owners. We did that twice in preparation for the planning commission meeting and we also did it in preparation for this meeting. We received one comment from the business owners and it was, great, we like what you're doing. That was it. So we wanted to report that we did, reached out to everyone and created a quick memo to give them a quick one-on-one or guidance regarding how we take a look at parking. Regarding the police department and the streets department, which we have placed their official comments in the staff report listed on page forty and forty-one, we want to let you know that they do not support this reduction in parking as they both find that it's going to create possible problems in the future and create more stress to both of their departments. We shared that information. We shared these exact same memos that we have in this packet. They were, it was shared with the planning commission. And I believe it was Commissioner Jacobs who indicated that the commission was aware of the importance of parking, that usually once it's there, it's there. It's not something that is too flexible in nature, that we understood or that the commission, same with staff, by the way, we understood their concern. However, we were moving forward, we were still moving forward with the reduction. So as the commission put it, they're making a conscious decision in their recommendation that they provided to you on that date. And we can spend more time speaking about that or even looking at their comments and Mr. Benson and Chief Beeler are both here. So we can bring them up if necessary. I'll be quick on page twenty-eight. There are some criticisms regarding ITE and their data as their survey sites go back to the eighties. And we took a look at two specific types of land uses that they have different categories for, for a low-rise multifamily housing and then a mid-rise. And we consider Bountiful being suburban in nature, not within a half a mile of rail transit. If, in their average of some of the survey data work that they've done, they're looking at one point seven parking spaces per unit without any type of bedroom count. And on the, that would be the one for the low-rise and then for the mid-rise, actually the same number, one point seven space on fifty-two sites versus sixty-two, fifty-two and sixty-two. And then per bedroom, they looked at it from that point of view, they're looking at one parking space, which ironically or coincidentally, it was somewhat what the applicant provided in their original recommendation. I need to talk about just for two seconds, page twenty-nine. Bountiful City has the highest parking requirement for a single-family. I know that we're not talking about that tonight, but in a way, it kind of sets the tone as to our parking ratios. Every other city for a single-family dwelling, the minimum parking requirement is simple, two spaces. With that said, based on traditional development patterns of a single-family dwelling, which often has more of a eighteen, twenty, twenty-five foot yard setback, you always end up getting a minimum of four based on those two parking spaces that usually cannot be located within the setback area. And we do talk about shared parking. And the reason why I want to bring that up, we're in the middle of page twenty-nine, is that in the downtown area, these specific numbers would only apply on the sites within the district that are not on Main Street. The Main Street sites already have a requirement for mixed use in that you, at the time, cannot build a multifamily residential project on Main Street without having retail or a non-residential use on the storefront. Given that, the code already allows for an opportunity for shared parking. So as the code indicates that the planning commission, or I should say the land use authority through a site plan review, which is the city council, you are able to offer a parking reduction based on that parking study that comes in. So even though that transportation engineer will eventually use these numbers, the real affected property for the multifamily residential parking or component is more so the sites that don't have frontage along Main Street as those sites have the opportunity to provide a project that's one hundred percent residential. So those are the true sites that would be affected by this code change, not so much the ones at front on Main Street. That was quite the presentation. That's it on parking. I would like to take a quick break and see if you have any questions for me regarding parking?
That's a great overview. Council, any questions?
Yes.
Let's hear it.
And council, I'm sorry, you also could choose to have your questions after the public hearing as well. You could choose to do it however you want to do it. Quick reminder for you.
Yes, thank you. Please, if you have a question.
Do we want to do questions now or are we doing it after?
Let's do questions now. We can open it up for a public hearing and then we can also discuss after.
I'm curious, on page twenty-nine in the second paragraph, you indicated that that our standards regarding parking were, are high across Davis County. I'm just curious to know specifically what cities were we compared to and how comparable are they to Davis, or excuse me, to Bountiful?
Yeah, if you turn, if you go to page thirty-nine.
Was there a chart that I missed? I apologize.
I don't have, I did. We provided Bountiful Centerville, Farming to North Salt Lake, West Bountiful, Woodcross, Layton. And then we added Murray, Draper, Logan, Salt Lake, Park City and Ogden. And every one of them requires two parking spaces per unit for a single-family dwelling. And then Bountiful City requires four. That is a quick survey, some handpicked cities. In my seventeen years here, I've not seen a city that has such a high parking ratio for a single-family. The standard, industry standard is always two for a single-family. Again, that's not what we're changing tonight, but in a way, it sets up the tone or sets up some sort of base for everything else. That's why I thought it was worth half a page on your staff report.
Do we have any research that is comparable to what it is we are discussing tonight?
We're talking about single-family dwellings?
You're just, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but you were indicating that this isn't exactly what we are discussing, although it sets the tone. But do we have anything comparable to our downtown area? Any research that is comparable to that?
Yeah, for multifamily, it's a little trickier in that usually in comparing different cities, it's more so based not on zones, but more so based on use. It's based on that either eighty percent of the time or even more, it's based on the number of bedrooms. The other twenty percent, I would say, is based on the size of each unit. And that's why we have the green box on page thirty-nine, which tries to focus the discussion regarding multifamily.
Counselwoman Barr, I'm curious, is your question specific to the specialized nature of the downtown zone within this multifamily discussion, and whether any of these cities have a zone that mirrors this zone compared to other zones?
Comparable.
I guess, I want to make sure.
It's difficult to find a comparable zone, as zoning is so localized. It's a little bit more challenging and time-consuming finding that comparable area in a different city, and to try to compare it. Another trend that we have is, if it helps, I hope it does, in that they set up ratios for multifamily, and if you are either a quarter of a mile or half a mile away from a transit line, you get a 25% reduction, if you will, more for urban environments that we would fall in. But we've chosen, through the commission, the submitted application, and even through my department, not to follow that specific trend regarding proximity to the bus line. And I don't know if that helps.
It does, but it doesn't, it doesn't. No, but it does overall. Thank you. So I guess we don't have anything specifically that is a comparable, any research or data that is comparable to our current downtown area?
We have not done a zone-for-zone analysis, more of a city-by-city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, we will go to a public hearing.
I have another one.
Okay, yes.
There's been discussion on changing some of the on-street parking to a forty-five-degree angle. Is that correct? And if that happens, would that, how much would that, or what's the timeline on that? And if we did that, how much would that increase the 156 on-street parking number? Or is that not something we know?
I don't know that we know how many additional parking spots that it provides, and the timing isn't in the next few years. I think the emphasis we've put on some of the other projects, fiber notably, has kind of put that off a little bit, and we, as well as some of the grants we've made with RDA funds, have spent down our fund balance. So it's probably not for the next five years or so.
Okay.
To answer your other question, we don't have the number of how many more parking spaces it would bring. We would lose some through specific bulbouts that we would want to place in some key corners, so we would lose some space there. But with that said, angled parking tends to be more efficient than parallel parking.
Mayor, I was gonna, just, we focused on the parking for his presentation, but before we went to public comment, the carport.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Sure.
Change.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
That reminder. Carports, seven and zero vote. We, staff, we had completely different language. We did. However, given the planning commission's deliberation and hard work, we, staff, we don't oppose what they came up with. We're on top of page thirty. Non-flammable carport, open on all sides with a roof structure, shall have a minimum rear and sideyard setback of five feet from posts and one foot from the roof to the property line. This is an exception to accessory structures, in that the code simply indicates that accessory structures shall meet standard or regular setbacks on side and rear, which is ten feet. So this is keeping that language for accessory structures of all sorts. It could be a shed, a maintenance shed in the back, or any type of accessory structure. What the commission indicated is, if it's a carport that fits this definition, it could encroach five feet. The five-foot was an on-the-spot recommendation from staff, in that the code already requires a five-foot landscaping buffer around the periphery, more so the rear and the sideyard areas of a site. And then there was some debate regarding that one-foot setback for that roof part of the carport, and it was simply decided to be consistent with residential multifamily or single-family dwelling with that accessory structure, that on that roof piece, it needs to be one foot from the property line. And this, as you can see here, they voted with a seven-zero vote to move forward on that. Not much discussion on that, other than the commission's brand-new wording for the land use code.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing further at this time from counsel, then we will move to a public hearing. This is a public hearing to discuss the ordinance 2023-05, which amends the land use code regarding downtown zone residential parking and carport standards. So we'd love to hear from you, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this.
My name is Janelle Vandenberg, and I live in Bountiful. And I just had a question just from the discussion. You mentioned that you ask the businesses their opinion, and I was just wondering if there was any survey done of the residents, or if there's ever been, you know, a survey of how residents feel about the parking that they already have, or a change to that parking?
For that? We did. It wasn't more of a, it wasn't a survey, per se. It was a notification. As I indicated, we sent the email out to business owners twice, and it was an actual letter that was sent out to every registered property owner twice, to share their opinion with us. So it was a letter that was sent out to property owners, and it was an email sent to registered business owners.
Within a proximity of the zone change?
I'm sorry, yeah. The business owners, registered, that have an active business license, obviously, and then the property owners, all within the downtown zone.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Do you want my name? Not, or you care? Brian Milton, for purposes of this, semi-north Main Street, which is where I office. I've been involved developing your downtown for about twenty-five years, and I believe I can claim to be one of the major stockholders in your downtown. So some of the thoughts I have, I'm gonna take the parking carports first, because honestly, it seems to be, at least from planning commission, a very solid seven-zero recommendation. What that does, and the verbiage is fine from my perspective, it allows your hanging part of the carport, the top, within a foot of a property line. So that means you're not dripping on a neighbor's property, which there's other rules about that. Structure has to be in five feet from property line. What that does is it allows that parking structure just to slide a little bit. And why is that important in downtown? Yeah, sixty-five-foot wide lots. And by the time you have five feet on one side for landscape, five feet on the other for landscape, a twenty-four-foot drive and an eighteen-foot parking stall, mathematically, that is holding up developments for your downtown. So I'm fully in support of the carport modification. On the parking, which is a very interesting thing, I have to start with, and I could give you the list of what I've done, or the three downtown in twenty-five years I didn't do, of everything you see down there. But my experience, I started with Lakewood, it's about ninety-nine, which is where Dr. Pace's office is, where my office is. That was your first vertical mixed use in Bountiful. And honestly, it was kind of one of the first mixed uses in the west side front. That has never had a parking problem. Now, since that time, you have in the, in the, a mixed use, vertical mixed use zone, or things that face on Main Street, we can do parking studies, which helps us with, and Francisco commented on that, for things frontages on Main Street. But start marching down the street. I did the tenplex behind the Bountiful Museum, never a parking problem. I did the buildings with Vito's, both corners of First and Main, never a parking problem. I did the sixplexes down 100 South, never a parking problem. Twelve plexes at the corner, not a parking problem. I built for Kenny on, right behind his thing, never a parking problem. These are based on your old or current standards. They have evolved the last time we did the downtown zone. But the main point of going through that long dialogue is, your current zoning does not serve your community on your parking. It simply does not allow your downtown to grow. You need the housing stock to push your business stock. And honestly, we could use a really good regional, high-end grocery store, too. But that was just a plug for Kate. But anyway, I refer to page twenty-seven, which has the graphic chart at the top with the gray, green, and blue. And that's current zone, forget the green, okay, and go right to the blue. Well, the applicant, anyway, let's move past that. Renaissance, I'm very involved in Renaissance. I believe the aggregate parking study that is in your ordinance for that zone, 1.31, Francisco?
It was 1.23, and then at that last amendment, it was modified to slightly more than that. I think we're 1.5, 1.4. I would have to look it up.
I think it's 1.31. But what we're really saying is, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom studio, 1.3 stalls for any residential stock in Renaissance. And that's a parking study, and that is a very specific adopted zoning text for Bountiful City. I only bring that up to tell you how other people are looking at parking. I have properties in Pleasant Grove, their Main Street. You know how they handled my parking? They gave it to me on city property. I have a property in Lehigh, Main and Center. You know how they handled their parking? They leased me for $280 a year, all the parking I needed to build the building. That's what other cities are doing to entice economic development on their Main Streets. And I just finished the Lehigh one, literally in January. So this is very current data. When I go to your housing stock chart, the studio versus one and one, I'm in favor of that. But I honestly, and in support of staff's recommendations, in the 1.75 or two or less, I think you're still precluding that component to happen. And this is not on Main Street frontage, as Francisco pointed out. This is on your mid-block frontage, your side roads, and it's predominantly west of Main Street. That's where this will actually make a difference. So really, it's not the frontage of Main Street, and it's from there back to 100 West is really what you're talking about. It does affect the east of Main Street, but there's no parcels there to do anything on. But you're hulking your smile, or the things that need to happen as one of the components of a vibrant downtown, is that frontage back to 100 West. And if you really macro this down to where this actually affects, it's that section, Fifth South to Fourth North. So I think that pretty much covers it. I don't know if you have any questions for me on my thoughts. But my experience for twenty-five years is you overpark, you are currently fairly aggressive on your parking requirements. Aggressive meaning that you're providing stalls that aren't used. The stalls don't only cost you in land and density, but they also currently cost you to do, just a paved stall, about 22,000 apiece. And that's a huge impact on viability, especially in our current market. And markets change, but we have to deal with what's going on today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'd love to hear from anyone who would like to speak.
I love to speak. So thanks for the opportunity. My name is Bob Murray. I live at 513 Greystone in Farmington, but I also am a co-owner of the City Creek Building at 390 South Main. And Commissioner or Councilmember Barr brought up the angled parking, and I'm gonna beat that drum a little bit if I could. I would love to see that be elevated as a priority for the city. I would love to see a study, an actual study done, to see what we could gain by having angled parking in the areas where we currently have just parallel parking. In front of our building, I know we could gain probably two or three more spaces. And as I look at the Marie Callender's project that Brian Milton's gonna be doing at some point, he's got commercial space at the, you know, at the ground level of that project, and you're gonna need more parking for that. And other developments that are gonna happen down Main Street, John Egan wants to be able to do a development at his place. He's got 6,900 square feet of commercial space. Where are people gonna park on Main Street, where it's parallel parking? If you had angled parking, you could get a lot more people parking along Main Street. I'd just like to see, I know budgets derive decisions, and I know those decisions are tough to make when the budgets aren't there, but, gosh, I'd love to see you elevate that to a little higher level. When you say it's out five years, wow, I just think, you know, that's gonna inhibit, I think, opportunity for the city. Just my thoughts.
Thanks. Anyone else looking to, interested in speaking to this proposal?
John Egan, who lives at 1424 South, 1500 East. I appreciate so much the city council and the planning. I'm amazed at the time and efforts that you put in on our behalf. I'd like to just talk a little bit. I didn't understand what it meant to have one for a studio and one for a one-bedroom. And the builder in the planning commission said, "If you have one and a half or one and a quarter for a one-bedroom, people will build studios." And I promptly said to the architect, "For our thing, we have two studios. Everything else is one-bedroom, two-bedroom." Promptly said, "Your money's gonna be best spent to convert your one-bedrooms to studios." So that really pushes the thoughts to me, that we want to have one-one, you know, that have that. And the parallel parking, I've been on Main Street sixty years personally, working, and I remember when it was angled parking. I have our entire block from Third South to Fourth South has five street parking spots. Can you imagine the parking problems we'd have if we had the Blacksmith Ice Cream Shop there? I mean, you're talking twenty spots at night. We've got five in a block. So I'm in favor of going back to diagonal parking, and it will benefit. When I talk to people commercial, want to look into my building, and I tell them I have three parking spots for 7,000 square feet on the street, it's not, it's not a great thought, you know? So anyway, but I thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this proposal tonight? Anyone else that would like to speak to this proposal tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will bring that back to the City Council. And what discussion do you have, Council?
I'd like to emphasize or restate again what Mr. Egan just said. He talked about the importance of having equivalent parking standards or requirements for the studio and one-bedroom. For if not that, it would incentivize folks to just build studio apartments. So I think as we work through these numbers, it's important to remember that what we set as our requirement can either disincentivize or incentivize potential builders towards one unit or another, one unit type or another. So if you have a personal preference on the size of units you want to have in our housing stock, it would be good to take note of that, I think.
It's a good point, yes, thank you. Any other thoughts?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I just want to say a thank you to the Planning Department for the hard work that they have put into this recommendation that is being brought forth today. And to, I'd like to thank all of the members of the Planning Commission as well. This is something that was discussed multiple times at multiple meetings at great length. And I think that what is being proposed tonight is common sense. And as Councilmember Higgins said, will help bring positive development in the downtown zone and be part of the change, the good, purposeful, intentional, you know, development and change that we would like to see in Bountiful, in the downtown zone.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I have some reservation in reducing our, and maybe I'm simplifying it by saying reducing our parking standards or requirements, given the fact that both our police department and streets department are against it. And those are the people who are boots on the ground essentially, who are seeing the parking situations at 2:00 in the morning, midnight, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. They're the ones who are seeing kind of what's going on throughout the city. And I really do take stock in their recommendation and their opinion. And especially as Mr. Egan said, he doesn't have parking right now. So I just, so why would we take away parking spaces when businesses are saying they don't have enough to begin with? But so, and maybe I'm not looking at this correctly. And I'm curious to know, what business owner said that they were a pro, that they did like the plan?
I apologize, I don't have that number. I delegated that over to Amber.
Oh, you said it was one person, one business? And I'm just curious to know what business it was?
I don't have that in front of me.
Oh, you don't know?
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's fine. So I just, I don't, as we're, again, I want to invite development to our city, I really do. But I really do am weighing the opinion of our street director and our police chief heavily in this decision because I think, again, they are the ones who are actually seeing the parking situations at various times of day and year.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask if Charles or Chief Beeler, if either of you would like to comment?
First off, I would say, whatever you decide, we're still going to be friends. So don't take offense to that. And that goes to our business owners and developers as well. So just because we disagree on this doesn't mean that we won't be friends after this, at least on my part. So I took similar note to something that you just mentioned. I think it's ironic that we're talking about reducing the number of parking spaces for a development down there. And another speaker comes up, business owner, and says, "We need to do something about our parking on Main Street because we don't have enough." So from our perspect, my perspective as the police chief is we're the ones who have to deal with the complaints and the problems. When people are parking in business, when residents park in a business person's parking spot, they're not going to call Francisco. If they do, he's going to call us. They're not going to call you as council members. If they do, you're probably going to call us to address it. And to say that there aren't businesses that are apartments that deal with this particular problem, maybe not so much in the downtown area, although I would mention the apartments on maybe Second South and Main Street. They park on Main Street all the time. I would say that, I believe it's the Lakeview Apartments, that they have residents who park on Main Street all the time. You reduce those numbers, and you have now residents starting to park in business owners' Main Street frontage, where in the daytime and business hours for sure, there's not enough, there's probably not enough parking anyway. So my concern is definitely revolves around the idea of when there is a problem, now we have police officers who have to go deal with parking problems. And we have much more important things to have to deal with in getting in those types of squabbles. Then of course, not to mention it, so it may not be on the Main Street, like was mentioned, that he believes that it's going to be on the side roads from Main Street to First West. And then you get into winter parking and the exact same thing. Some people really like the winter parking regulations, and some people really hate the parking regulations for winter parking. But we are the ones who have to deal with the parking problems during snow removal or park for more than the actual, it means it's 48 hours the state lies. And then Charles may choose to come up here or may not. But they're the ones who are not able to plow roads when that happens. So my concern is not anything more than just how this affects us and the types of problems that we have to deal with. And I would rather than not be parking. We just got back from a trip from Europe, my wife and I, where they have public transit to support this type of a concept. In my opinion, in order to make this work and to have a vibrant downtown Bountiful, which I would like to see as well, I support our local businesses down there as much as possible. My opinion, you need to build the infrastructure in order to make that happen. And right now, I don't think, I don't think, we don't have it. You have one bus line, two bus lines in Bountiful. One down north and south on Fourth East, one north and south on Main Street. And if you think people are going to live in these apartment complexes and not have cars because there's no parking spaces, my opinion, that's not accurate. They have to drive, you have to get to Costco, you have to get to Salt Lake, you have to get to the front-runner, and we don't have ways to get anywhere. Two bus lines. So those are my comments. If I, I'd be happy to answer anything else.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to that, Charles?
Yes, and right now, we still have our issues with snow plowing. We have our issues with, actually, street sweeping when we're doing that. We can't get into certain areas. Some of the apartment complexes that are there, that are on the side roads, are still parking on Main Street. And when we need to do road maintenance, we have to try to, we call Ed, to try to get some cars moved so we can get to what we need to do. So if we have less parking, that's going to mean more parking is going to migrate onto Main Street. That's just kind of the way it is. And how Ed is talking about the transit system with, if, there is only place. There is, you still need a car to go other places where mass transit doesn't go. They may take it into Salt Lake, they may go into their business there. But when they get home, they've still got to go to other places where the bus routes don't go. Okay, anything else?
Thank you. You know, if you don't mind, Council, I'd just like to hear from Kenny Knighton. You're an apartment complex owner, so you can maybe speak to how it is for the apartment people in apartments. Would you mind just giving us your perspective?
Thank you, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, we've got, I've got a 14-unit apartment with two commercial spaces currently on Third South and Main. I think it comes down to this, is that if we want to see development for downtown, and I believe we all do, is that we got to cut, you know, the developers a break here. On my 16-plex, I've never had that thing full. Sometimes the beauty salons that I rent to in the front for the commercial, you know, they'll have on a busy day, and it's, you know, occasionally, they'll fill up, take a lot of my spots. Of course, then at that, those times, they do park on the street. But we've got laws in our city already about parking 24 hours or more. You know, sometimes we maybe we'll need to put up a sign. But I, it wasn't too long ago, we had two-hour parking on Main Street. You know, that's when Rusty was around, and then they took the signs down. But, you know, as I told you before, I mean, we've got a little game we play about hold your breath till the car goes by on Main Street. It's a good game. Come to my office sometime and we'll play it. And there's other times, you know, we have prays downtown that I don't know how many thousands of people migrate to Main Street, and somehow they're able to park someplace. So parking on the street, with, you know, all respect to our chief, we do have laws, and they, and we need, you know, if it becomes a problem, then we deal with it. I think the lower parking standards are going to allow me to build. I'm ready to build now. But I can't, the economics with the higher parking standards, it's just not going to happen. It's not just me, I mean, it's the whole downtown. Like Brian said, the west side of Main Street is primarily where this is going to be happening. John's comment about wanting more parallel parking on Main Street, thank you very little, John, for, you know, but parallel parking sure would be great. But, you know, there's nobody parked in front of my place, in front of K&amp;J Auto, all day long, day after day after day. The more, the parking problems, if any, are, you know, like around the ice cream stores at certain hours, you know, that were around Vito's certain hours. But gen, you know, if you take the whole picture, we've got, you know, ample parking for downtown. People are lazy, they want to park in front of the store and walk in. But we have, look at all the city parking we have now. We're building another parking lot behind the old White House, you know, that's being developed. There's a ton of parking back there. Brian's got a lot of parking. So in certain areas, and street sweeping, that's going to be a problem anyplace. But if we, you know, enforce, or if we have a problem, we enforce the laws. That's that simple. I plan on building something nice, I plan on building something affordable. So the cost of building two- and three-bedroom apartments right now for downtown, you know, for the current code with the amount of parking, it just won't happen. It can't, it's just not economically feasible. There was another, I was going to bring up, oh, it slipped my mind, sorry. But east of Main Street, there's not much happening there. West of Main Street, those areas, I, you know, for density, I think that we need a reduction in parking so that we can get these projects underway. Look how much had been built downtown lately in the past five years. Nothing, nothing. And, you know, ask yourself why. How, nothing has been built downtown. It's the economy, it's interest rates. Parking has stifled development in the downtown area. My tenants in my 14, 16-plex, they're the people you see walking downstairs or walking downtown with the strollers and their kids. They're going into these shops and supporting them. Those are the people you see, a lot of them, walking the downtown area. Do we want more people downtown? I think the answer is yes. So let's make it possible to do that. The carport issue, I think that speaks for itself. I think that's a no-brainer. But the reducing the parking is going to be very helpful to get a project going. If we were to, if we're going to, if we stuck with the same parking standards we have today, I'm not building. John's not going to build, he can't. It doesn't make sense. So I'm sorry about getting in the way of the street sweeper. I love the street, I like to see the streets sweep, that's for sure. But, and the chief's comment about more transit and stuff, I've waited, you know, how many years I've been on Main Street? 35 years, and waited to see, you know, more development happen downtown. If we want more development downtown, and we do, I believe, then reduce the parking standards. And if it creates an issue, if it, if it read, you know, I have a city employee who's in this room now, who said, that told me that, you know, about, you know, having too much park, he says, I mean, not having enough parking downtown? He said, "Wouldn't that be a wonderful problem to have?" Because we don't have it now. So, any questions for me?
Thank you. Thanks for your perspective.
Thank you.
Okay, any other?
Thanks to staff too, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from council members?
If I could, Mayor, I'd love to.
Okay.
Want to reemphasize that there's no plan or push or desire to get rid of our parking regulations, street parking regulations. Those will remain the same. Folks will still have to park off the street in the winter. Also to the chief, I'd say that these requirements already represent the lack of transit in Bountiful. That's already built in. If you go downtown in Salt Lake, which I know we're not Salt Lake, but on the rail lines, the requirements are half or fractions of a stall per unit, or no requirements at all. And I think that the recommendation of the Planning Commission seems reasonable based on the kind of transit that we have. One other item, chief, and of course, we'll still be friends, is that your kids and my kids probably don't shop at Costco. And they might never. And they don't, lots of them don't want to have a yard, they don't want to have a garden. They want to have a place where everything's taken care of, and they just have a living space. And fewer and fewer of them have multiple cars. And we have participated in a lot of projects around the state along the Wasatch Front where requirements, again, are under one stall per unit. And those are not all studio units. So I think that the rates that are recommended by Planning Commission already account for the lack of transit. Again, our laws are not going to change, folks are still going to have to park off the street. And there is a changing demographic on who lives close to the transit and who rents in those areas.
Thanks for that. Any other comments?
I have some thoughts, Mayor.
Please.
So as this topic has approached, as we've had guidance that we've given to the Planning Commission and input from residents over the years, whenever I'm asked about Main Street and what I want for Main Street, I always say I want vibrancy. Vibrancy is what I want for Main Street. And it's a great phrase. But the question is, is like, what's the formula for vibrancy? And as I thought a lot about it, it's got a whole bunch of different elements to it that we've been working on. This council's been working on them, past council's been working on them. And it's public art, it's open space, it's a friendly business environment, it's parking, it's more people and more density. And so it's a, it's a complex formula to achieving vibrancy. And, you know, one thing about formulas is they have to balance. If you get, you know, too weighted on one end or the other, you don't end up with a recipe that equals the vibrancy you are looking for. So as I've heard from people who have properties they want to develop, people have businesses, they want to have see increased traffic, from our residents who we've heard repeatedly through the general plan process, definitely want more restaurants downtown. And as Mr. Nolton noted, I personally would love to see a mid-sized And as Mr. Holton noted, I personally would love to see a mid-sized grocery store of some kind on Main Street. It's how do we continue to play with that formula so at the end it equals vibrancy? And I don't want to so drastically play with the formula that we miss it and we overshoot it. So I appreciate the feedback from our Planning Commission, our feedback from the community, and many of our developers that want to develop on Main Street also are residents, and that's a unique perspective, I think, too. People that want to develop but also want to live here. So we, we think that they share that vision for vibrancy. I feel like we've made some changes, but as Mr. Holton points out, maybe not enough. But in going slow as we play with the recipe to turn out the outcome we want, I feel like that's the right approach. Personally, I'd love to see us speed up the formula for our angled parking. And I'm sure that that will be a topic that the council will take up in planning retreats as we look at the various projects before us on how much emphasis in budget and time we can put there, because I think that is a key component to how we make Main Street vibrant. So as I look at this proposal, and I look at how we've continued to try and tweak this recipe so that the outcome is vibrancy, it feels like we're getting closer. It may not be perfect. But I like closer. And so I think I can get comfortable with what's been recommended by the staff with the help of the Planning Commission and with the help of two residents willing to put up their own money to help us think about it on a faster timeframe. And so those are the thoughts I have to share.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I'd like to piggyback on my colleague, Councilmember Bradshaw's comments about vibrancy. And one thing that is a vibrancy killer is when you have non-productive properties sprinkled throughout an area that you are attempting to generate that vibrancy that Councilmember Bradshaw spoke about. And in the last week, I've driven every single street in the downtown zone, and I think it's important to remember that we're just talking about a very small area in our city, the downtown zone, one block east-west of a nine-block stretch that is unique, that is, that we prioritize as being mixed use. And, and an area where we think that is appropriate for more multifamily housing. Because there, although we, as the chief pointed out, we don't have a lot of public transit, we do have public transit here. And we're hoping that there will be more and better public transit options in the future. And I would invite people to go and drive every single street multiple times a day in this downtown zone and see what's happening there. And look with a real critical eye at the areas that are non-productive, empty lots, fallow land, that you think, what, what better purpose could be happening here? And how long has this been in this state? Years, decades? And, and I think because it is such a unique area that the recommendations by the Planning Commission are appropriate. I was a person who voted no on the motion at Planning Commission for the one parking unit, or one parking space for the one-bedroom unit. However, the three of us, Sean Monson, Beverly Ward, and myself, who voted no, we were not opposed to the reduced parking standards, to be clear. We were simply suggesting that 1.25 might be a more appropriate number, going down from the 1.75, I believe, if that's right, Francisco, mainly considering that many one-bedrooms units might have renters that had two cars and, and that the other cities that had gone to one space for one unit, for one bedroom, were Salt Lake and Park City. That being said, we did, it was unanimous among the parking, or the Planning Commission, to reduce the parking standards on every other level, and there was this 0.25 difference only on the one-bedroom unit. So, anyway, those are just my comments. I wanted to piggyback on that vibrancy discussion. And the, my desire, and what I think all of us feel, is to see, is there, what are the ways that we can be, or have more productive properties in this area that bring that vibrancy quotient? And it's true, the developers who are involved in this area of town, they are local people who want to build good projects, who want to, they share that vision of vibrancy. And so, for that reason, I, I would, unless there is other discussion, I would like to make a motion.
I have a few thoughts, Councilmember Price-Hewish, if you don't mind.
Councilwoman Price-Hewish, hold that thought just for a minute, and then you can go ahead and make a motion. We'll just allow Councilwoman Segura Barr a moment.
I'm just going to rain on everybody's parade. No, no, I, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't mean to be flippant about it because I know this is a very big decision, and I do, I do appreciate the developers who are here and who want to bring this vibrancy to our, to our city. But I, I just have, for example, with the two, the two examples in the staff report on page 25 and 27, we're complaining that we don't have enough parking on one hand, but then when we compare these two parking scenarios on reducing the parking, it's taking away essentially 18 parking spots. And for me, that just, I can't reconcile that discrepancy of the complaining that we don't have enough parking, but then wanting to take away parking. And so I just, maybe my colleagues can help me understand.
Could I?
Why? Yes, please.
So I think in front of Mr. Egan's property, there's parallel parking on Main Street. I think Mr. Egan is, in one sense, lobbying for angled parking further south to give him additional Main Street, street parking, rather than complaining about parking overall.
So would it be prudent for the city, then, to provide more parking on Main Street before we push additional parking to our residential streets where our residents are living? Would that, would that be a more appropriate first step?
No.
No? Why?
Because the parking that's already going to be provided inside of each of the developments will be providing the necessary parking. People who are parking on Main Street, people who are parking on side streets right now are doing that because it's closer to their door. The development that they live in still has all the parking that's required for them to park inside the parking lot. So just as you may back out of your park, your driveway and park on the street in front of your house when you need your driveway for other things, those people are pulling out of their parking lot, parking closer to their front door during the summer when they can. There's still parking for those folks, off the street and according to law. So there's, nobody's parking on the street right now because they don't have a place to park. They're parking because the street is either more convenient and out of their way, or because it's closer to their door.
Okay.
Sure.
Hate to say it, but I think I shot myself in the foot when I complained about that. My development has 18 apartments. Depending on the setback, we would have 36 parking spots. So there'd be two parking spots for whether it was a studio, a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom. So there's ample parking for the people that are living there in the apartment complex and/or commercial. What I was trying to say was, I got two parking spots in front of the building, and it's a half a block.
No, and that I under-
I got that, but I wanted you to know that my current plan, with, depending on the setbacks, would have two spots for every apartment.
Thanks for that clarification.
And so there's ample parking in my property, and there's parking in place to put snow on the property because I've been plowing mine for 30 years. So I know where the snow's got to go. I don't have to put it anywhere else out on the street.
That's great. Yes, thank you.
But that's with the current code, not with the updated. That's with the updated code for you.
That's, that's more parking than what the current, or the updated code would require. But if we stayed with the code as it is now, I don't have enough parking spots. I'd have to have 42. The current code, I'd have to have 42 spots, so I couldn't build it. If we do the reduction, then I can build it. But my plan is still to have two spots per unit.
Thank you.
So to have ample parking.
Thank you. Great.
But they do park on the street, let me tell you, if the door's closer.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, any other comments from the council, or if not, I'll entertain a motion?
If I may, Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Land Use Code text amendment affecting the downtown zone residential parking and carport standards as set forth in the staff report.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A reluctant aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for your work. Okay, we will now move to consider approval of a lotline adjustment. Mr. Lloyd Cheaney.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I have for the council's consideration the approval of a lotline adjustment in the Sunset Hollow subdivision.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
That motion passes. Thank you. We will now adjourn to an RDA meeting with a separate agenda. Do we need a little break, Miranda, or? Okay, okay, we'll just take a brief, okay, I'd like to-
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn from this meeting and re-adjourn as the RDA board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to a RDA meeting. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will now adjourn, and then we will reconvene in a minute for an RDA meeting. Thank you.